Okay, I'll bring this committee of the whole meeting to order on Friday, April the ninth at nine oh two. And that we are acknowledged that we are on the traditional territory of Stahalis. And the next order of business, please.
Yes, your worship, we'll move on to number two, introduction of late items. Do you have any late items, your worship?
No, I have no late items.
Thank you. Could we have approval of the agenda then, please?
Approval of the agenda moved by Council of Vidal, sent it by Council of Hooper. Called a question, all in favor? Thank you. Next order.
Thank you, your worship. We'll move on to number four, items for discussion. We have a report from the planning consultant regarding the official community plan review process.
And is the consultant on?
Mr. Cossey?
Mr. Cossey on?
Yes, I am.
Good morning, Ken.
Good morning. Good morning, councilors and mayor. Thank you very much, your worship. Today, we're going to talk about outlining the community plan review process. And this is an updated report that was first presented to council in late 2009. However, because of the pandemic, we only got partway into it during the research. And then we had to come to a halt because there's, for obvious reasons, concern about the public health and safety issues. As the province has started their vaccination component for British Columbia, it's now time to contemplate reactivating the village's OCP update programs. As we all know, the OCP is a comprehensive policy document designed to guide the physical, environmental, economic, social, and cultural development of the village. It should be a document that portrays a visual, attractive, and thorough in its presentation of the goals, objectives, and policies, and it must align with the provincial interest to foster responsible growth. The current OCP was adopted in 2007, and today is 14 years old. While there is no specific regulatory requirement that stipulates how long an OCP should be in place, it is recommended that periodic reviews take place to ensure that the vision and the goals of the plan are still applicable today. Within section 2.3 of the village's current bylaw, you have your vision statement that's outlined on the top of page two. And it's important to note that any new emerging trends and issues are captured in the OCP review so that the revised official community plan can address any trends effectively. One of the things about an official community plan is you have to remember that it's not a static document. It's a living, breathing document. And as we could, when some new issue comes along and council wants to consider that into their official community plan, then that happens. Ensuring that the successful implementation of the official community plan requires a commitment that extends well beyond the date of adoption. And that includes setting up a monitoring and evaluation program at some point in the future. The above referenced long-term vision is complemented by 10 goals that are outlined there in the middle of page number two. And the authority to create an official community plan is found, is contained within the Local Government Act, specifically sections 471 to 478. And these sections address the following: the purpose of the plan, you can adopt if you wish more than one official community plan, and it must be adopted as a schedule. The content, it's got to outline your content and your process requirements. It has to have policy statements. You have to figure out how the consultation and engagement for the development of the OCP will be addressed. There'll be discussion, you have to have discussions with the Fraser Cascade School District. And then we have to discuss how the bylaw is going to be adopted per the Local Government Act. And then we have to look at the effect of the official community plan. Well, there's many community plans, and they're all slightly different. Each municipality or regional district, the core aspects of the review will include a look at the use of the lands and any other community-related research, the use of a technical analysis, the preparation of a draft bylaw. There'll be community consultation and then the formal adoption process. We have to remember that the creation of an official community plan is a discretionary power of council. However, once an OCP is adopted, all bylaws enacted or works and services provided must be consistent with the plan. However, regardless of that point, the OCP does not commit the village to proceed with any works or other projects outlined or mentioned in the plan. The big important factor of the official community plan is consultations. And there's many, many models that you can utilize to say that you've gone through the consultation process. But for my professional opinion, it's best that you have a process that involves and engages the community, as outlined in the model in the lower part of page three. And the steps to create, make sure that you've had this proper discussion and engagement includes the use of an open house, the use of world cafes, design characks, town hall meetings, focus groups, specific stakeholder meetings, presentations at community events, the use of surveys and newsletters, the use of engagement platforms like Bang the Table, Line Survey, and Survey Monkey, and the use of Zoom meetings. So just speaking in very general terms, the steps to, for the creation of the village's new OCP would include the following process: sending letters out to the required First Nations as directed by council, informing the nation that the village is working on an OCP update, perform some research, this concludes the background report, meeting the current, we're reviewing and meeting what the current OCP requirements are, performing a gap analysis, looking at your transportation plan, looking at your land uses, looking at the environmental review of regulatory requirements, the quality of life survey, and what other issues need to be addressed. And this would include things like reviewing your road, bridge, and active transportation master plan, your water master plan, your housing needs survey, your age-friendly community action plan, then performing a technical analysis, what types of use makes sense for that specific area, and what sort of planning tools can we use. Prepare that, then we prepare the draft bylaw, then we look at the development of the consultation program, and then council decides who is to, who we are to consult, and how do we collect the community input. Then after council has approved the consultation program, then we can implement the plan, and we're off to the races, so to speak, and then collecting all of the community information. And then because of that collection of the community information, we may have to revise the draft plan, which is fine, and there's nothing wrong with that at all. Then after we've gone through the revision of the plan and the community and council are okay with it, then we can start the formal adoption process. And this can include referral, or will include referral of the bylaw to various external agencies for their comments. Then we can go into the formal public hearing process. And then after that, and if council's okay with everything, then we can adopt the bylaw as required. So far, the preliminary results on the review of the current bylaw, but some of the suggestions I would make are the consolidation of the bylaw, the addition of a wildfire development permit area, this could, as per section 9.3.1 of your current bylaw, the addition of a community amenity contribution policy. This will add to the transparency of the policy. Remember that works or little presentation I gave about a, maybe it was 18 months, two years back, on what a community amenity contribution is. It's in that gray area because it, we're not really, there's no direction that's provided other than that the minister has released a guide. And in the guide, they're suggesting that we have to be as transparent about the community amenity contributions policy as possible. Need to update some of the development permit requirements because as we all know, the repairing area regulations no longer exist. Now it's a repairing area protection regulations. So we have to update the Miami Creek development permit areas. We have to revise the special planning areas because it's structured more like a development permit area within a development permit area. We're looking to update the population projections, creating a development permit checklist concept, incorporation of the civic lands through the placemaking sessions, look at setting up a flood hazard development permit area, the creation of new housing policies based upon that housing report that's coming into place, and updating the greenhouse gas reduction policies. And from start to finish now with these additions, we're looking between 18 to 20 months, broken out as follows: the research, review, and coordinating, the collection of the background materials, and release of the community survey between May and July of 2021, the technical analysis from July to November 2021, preparing of the draft bylaw in December 2021 to January 2022. And then after that, in February 2022, subject to the COVID situation, we will start the consultation and engagement program. And then in December 2022, we would start the formal adoption process. So with respect to the community consultation requirements, please note that this is a required outside of the public hearing process. As per section 475, village must consider what consultation must take place with persons, organizations, and authorities that it considers will be affected by the revised official community plan. In addition, input should be provided from the following agencies of governments through the following suggested processes: sending a letter and the suggestion of a follow-up meeting to Tourism Harrison, the Harrison Agacy Chamber of Commerce, a government-to-government meeting with Stahalis First Nation to outline what the official community plan is and what the intent of the review is. And we could send out letters only to the Agricultural Land Commission, the District of Kent, the Fraser Cascade School District, Fraser Valley Regional District, Fraser Health, Department of Fisheries and Oceans, and the Provincial Repairing Area Protections Regulation Section, Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. We can look at doing a presentation to the Advisory Planning Commission, and then we can put up information on the village's website. But these are just suggestions at this particular point in time. At a later stage, a detailed community consultation strategy will be prepared for council and will need to be approved by council as per section 475 of the Local Government Act. So with that, your worship, the recommendation is that the official community plan review process be restarted in May 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Cossey. And we have a recommendation that the official community plan review process be started in May 2021. Do we have a mover? Moved by Council of Vidal. Now we'll have a discussion. We'll start from the right here, Council of Vidal.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Mr. Cossey, for your excellent report. Just a couple of questions. I know on page one, you indicated that the vision and goals of the OCP should be set up in such a manner that the success of the vision and the goals can be measured at some point in the future. I'm just curious as to what measurement tools and processes would be used in that situation.
Mr. Cossey?
Yes, thank you, worship. One of the things, for example, if one of the goals is to, because it's goal-specific, the measurement tool that will be put in place, for example, if you want it, if one of the goals came in saying that we wanted to protect agricultural land reserve land, and so we take a measure of what that is as of today, and then two or three years down the road, we see that it's still that, let's just say, when we measured it, it was at 50 hectares. And then when we look at it two or three years down the road, we still find it is at 50 hectares. However, if we find that it's down to 45 hectares, then we can say, what did we do wrong? How can we, you know, are we still preserving our agricultural land? So it'll be goal-specific to the, to whatever the individual goal is.
Thank you, Mr. Cossey. Carry on, councilor.
One more question, your worship. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cossey. And I just wanted some confirmation from you on page four. You indicated following issues are recommended to be incorporated into the bylaw. And under your last bullet point on page five, it indicates updating the greenhouse gas reduction policies. And we're currently looking at developing an urban forest master plan. Would that be included also in the draft OCP?
Mr. Cossey? Results of that, sorry, your worship, jumped ahead.
Carry on, Mr. Cossey.
Thank you. Yes, the urban master plan policies and procedures and the end results could be considered as part of the greenhouse gases reduction program. So they would have to relate to each other, yes.
Great, thank you very much. No further questions at this time, your worship.
Thank you, councillor.
Yeah, good morning, Ken. Just a couple of questions. We've got on page five, you've got revise the special planning area structure like a development permit area within a development permit area. Now, is that anything to do with like rezoning or large structures going into, say, R1 areas?
Mr. Cossey?
Thank you, worship. No, that's more along the lines that we got to make sure that that plan is structured properly, and it's, there's some clarity into it. There's, there's some words in there right now that make it feel to me like it's a development permit area, and that that's, that can be confusing because it's not really a development permit area.
Thank you, Ken. I asked that question because we've got nothing in the report regarding zoning and the protection of R1 zoning areas.
The official community plan does not get into that specific detail, but we can make, in the official community plan, we can talk about residential policies and where we would like the R1 zones to be implemented.
Yeah, I think that's going to be needed because on page four, you've got review regulation requirements, quality of life survey. So obviously, anything going on in these certain zone areas will affect the people's quality of life. We've got the, the flood has a development permit area. We've already got a flood plain. So what do you envision on this one?
It would be including those requirements that are outlined in the floodplain bylaw and bring it in as a development permit concept.
And there was one here about, excuse the, about parking and traffic management. We've, we've got one with traffic management and parking promote transportation alternatives. And then we've got one about establishing a pedestrian-oriented village center with a range of commercial services. Now, these two tend to conflict each other. We either, which one would you do first? Would you do the pedestrian-oriented village center? And then what the traffic management program around that? Or would you do it the other way around?
Mr. Cossey?
Thank you, worship. No, I would, I'm not going to come in with any perceived goals ideas. These are the current goals that were good back in 2007. The whole idea of the OCP revision and update is to talk about new goals.
Right. And you've got promote residential and tourist development, community relationships. That's going to be a hard one as we stand at the moment. But, and where we've got carry out the surveys, and you, that why I, why I've got no objections to the likes of Chamber of Coris or Chamber of Commiss or Tourism Harrison having an input in it, on the surveys that we're sending out, I'd like to make sure that it's just the residents of Harrison that are asked these questions. Otherwise, as you know full well, you get these so-called trolls that will fit in any survey and put down they live in Harrison. You could end up with so many different options and the rest of it. It will affect the well-being of the residents of Harrison. So I think that the survey should just go out to Harrison residents only, and any input regarding tourism or Chamber of Commerce should come directly from them.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Piper?
Thank you, your worship. Through you too, Mr. Cossey. Thank you very much for a great report this morning. I'm very familiar with OCPs and the processes. So congratulations to you for covering it off so well in, in your report. I'm hesitating because I honestly think it's the wrong time to proceed. I eagerly want an updated OCP. However, there's a couple of reasons behind my thinking. I think running the OCP consultation in an election year will certainly blur the works of the works due to the potential of having engagement activities and feedback, et cetera, kind of cloaked by politicking, which naturally occurs during an election year. And then leaving the formal adoption to a brand-new council as outlined in the report of December 2022, I think that's a little bit unfair to a new council. But secondly, I think the other contributing factor for me to put on the brakes currently is the other public participation events that we have on today's agenda, the Urban Forest Management Plan and the Parking Master Plan, that are going to be, I hope, receive high levels of our residents' engagement. So I just worry about engagement fatigue because OCP activities are lengthy and very involved. So that's my caution to it. So I think it should be paused until after the election in 2022 and let the new council lean into the processes then. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, councillor.
Microphone, Ken, thank you. Sorry. I don't have a lot of comments about the individual items. I realize it's a nice general list of where we're going to go. And all of those items, we will, you know, obviously, we'll develop with, with input, a lot of input. The timeframes, I'm not sure how the timeframes will work. Obviously, I'm assuming that by the time there's a lot of public consultation, the present pandemic will have significantly reduced in its impact. Obviously, if it doesn't, obviously, our timeframes will have to be extended. I certainly would want consultation to not be limited to online surveys and online participants for many reasons. But one simply is a lot of people in the village aren't really comfortable with that. As at our last council meeting, we had a letter from someone indicating they would like some older-fashioned communication, like a letter in the mailbox. So I wouldn't want us to be totally dependent on social media and online surveys for community participation. So if, if COVID were to continue on an unpredicted manner, and to be much longer, then I certainly would want to see the whole thing extended to allow for that. Because I think that there's a lot of people who actually do enjoy coming to a, you know, an in-house presentation and being able to participate verbally on a face-to-face basis. I think that's, that's important. I see the concerns councillor Piper has raised. I can kind of see it does come up in an election year, and it does kind of come to an odd, an odd situation with regard to, you know, expecting a new council to adopt it. It does seem to me, though, it's been since 2007, land use issues are very topical in the village now and have been lately. It does seem to me to be a good topic to get into. I think there's a lot of people who want to express opinions, and it would be nice to have it in a positive way where we're looking at what we want with the village. So I mean, if it stretches out longer, that's fine. But I do think I want to see it start. I do think starting it is fine, and then we may have to extend it depending on how consultation goes. I may have to extend it a lot, and we may have to extend it as well as if COVID makes it more difficult for, for input. But I think I do, I do very much want to see us start and get people being able to communicate their, their views, as well as for us to be able to communicate our, our views and, and kind of listen to what people have to say. So I think I want to start, but I do see, I do see the concerns. And that was the first thing I noticed, that it kind of isn't going to be finished by this council. It will carry, it will carry forward. So there is a danger of that becoming part of an election. And then I thought, well, what's wrong with that? If that were the reason people voted one way or the other, maybe that's a very legitimate basis for people electing council. So anyway, I think I want to see us start, and I think the overall scope of it is, is certainly fine. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I'll go around the table once more, one more time. But the only question that I personally have is the, the overlap onto a new council. I think if the process can be sort of moved ahead so that this council, if they so wish, adopt this bylaw prior to the December, December elections, I think that would be a good thing. It's, I know it's a lengthy process, and the important thing is that it will have public consultation, as councillor Palmer says. Hopefully, if things go the right way, we're all hoping for that with this pandemic, that it could be some open meetings to discuss this as well. But I'm sure our manager of community services will arrange the correct procedure so all, so the public at large will have an opportunity, those who are not on social media, to have their input. And I think that's the important part, is the public input into this. Because really, it's, it's, the OCP, it's from the public at large, it's not from council. It's, we get the input from the public, and then we make up, we decide. And of course, it goes to the APC for their review as well, which then will come back to council. We had the same situation back in 2004, 2005, when the OCP was, was put on the back burner, and then we had to restart it again in 2005. And it took, it took a good 18 months to do. So if there's any way that the process, I want to use the word speed it up, could happen so if this council so wishes that they want to, they want to see the final document and the bylaw pass, I think that would be a good thing. So I'll move around the table again for another, one more time. Councillor Vidal?
Thank you, your worship. My, my view is, is that the OCP revision has already been delayed once. I agree with councillor Palmer that I think we do need to start the process, and these timelines are not set in stone. And at the present time, the COVID and the effects of COVID are still unpredictable. I also agree with councillor Palmer that land use issues seem to be a tremendous concern with our residents. So I am in favor of this recommendation. And again, I think the timeframes are negotiable. If we can speed it up, I think that that would be beneficial. However, if things need to be delayed again because of the restrictions of COVID, which is one thing that is right now out of our control, but I will vote to approve the recommendation. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hooper?
Yeah, as it be, the elections coming up, I think it's actually a good time because it will show the commitment of anyone that wants to run again, and also any members thinking of running again will take part in the OPC. So it will give the residents a chance to So it will give the residents a chance to understand who's committed to it. And if there's any, say, any new members that are running, it will show that they've taken part within it. Because anyone that's not going to take part within the OPC really shouldn't be running for council. So it will show transparency all through the board. And it will give the residents, when it comes time to vote, to know who's actually been up front with it, who's been on board, and what their objections and their recommendations are. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Piper?
Thank you, your worship. I really have no other comments, other than comments that have been made are proving the point to me that the opportunity will be there for politicking. But I thank staff for their time, and I will not be supporting today's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Palmer?
I have no further comment.
Thank you. So there's no further comments on the recommendation that the official committee plan process review, plan review process be restarted in May 2021? It's been moved. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed councillor Piper? Motion passes. Thank you. Next order of business, please. Thank you, Mr. Cossey.
Thank you, your worship. Stay safe, everybody.
And you too.
Thank you, your worship. We'll move on to the next report. That's regarding council procedure amendments. This was a direction from council to review the current council procedure bylaw and to make suggested changes and revisions to include modern best practices, updates to technology, online meetings and virtual participation, as well as any housekeeping matters. Staff has gone through the bylaw, and I've just itemized some of the provisions that here in the report. Public notice posting places, and this was due to COVID and provincial health orders. Some recommended changes are to accommodate online council meetings. And that obviously includes physical distancing measures. So the suggested changes here are public notice posting places means the village's website at www.harrisonhott springs.ca, and all public notice bulletin boards. Also, under village website, and these are in the definitions, your worship, means the electronic information resources at www.harrisonhott springs.ca. So moving on, under meetings of council, this was also due to changes necessary under the provincial health orders. So some recommended changes for inclusion in this section, which would outline how council and committees meet and whether they're unable to attend in an event of emergency or provincial orders. How they can attend electronically, and some other provisions along with the members attending through electronic means. Moving on to the agenda, some provisions to update the wording to reflect some changes and for late items and things like that. And also, if council desires to amend the order of business to allow for the introduction of new business, this is recommended that this be added as a regular agenda item at the end of the meeting. And then that, of course, would require a motion of council, and the matter would be referred to staff for inclusion at a future meeting. Moving on to opening procedures, under provision C, staff is suggesting that this amendment be made to accurately reflect the procedure when corum can't be achieved. Moving on to rules of conduct and debate, some suggested amendments to include the council code of conduct policy and how members address the chair. Moving on to voting, there's just some changes in here, how members can vote. And this, of course, is all because of electronic means. Moving on, under voting, there's some suggestion to remove some of the provisions that are being changed. On motions, just some clarity in the motions. And moving on, petitions and delegations provisions, so that council will not hear more than two delegations at a meeting unless it's authorized by the mayor. Moving on to reports, that's just under, in the current procedure bylaw, just changes to accurately reflect the departments and just movement of conflict of interest provision in the section seven before voting. Due to the number of the substantial amendments, staff is recommending that a new council procedure bylaw be drafted and repeal of the old. However, that any other suggested changes or recommendations that council may have, then staff is ready to hear those. And in any event, before this bylaw is drafted, section 124.3 of the committee charter requires that public notice be given for any changes in the procedure bylaw. Thank you, your worship.
And if you just hear for receipt?
Yes, your worship.
Do you need a move before we start discussion?
There's no recommendation, and it's, council's received it, so if council has any suggestions.
Okay, so we'll start with some comments on this. I think we should start with councillor Palmer on this one.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. This is a bylaw that I've looked at dozens of times. And I'm glad that we have the opportunity to look at amending it. Now, a couple of issues I wanted to go to, and one, the presentation raises the issue of order of business, amending the order of business. And I think, I just wanted to first off, start off with the input on that. I think when we start off naively, running for council, we have thoughts of issues that we'd like to see forward, how we'd like to see the village develop. And then I think, once we're elected, we find out that most of what we're doing is reactive. Basically, an agenda comes in on the Wednesday or the Thursday, and those are the issues that we're dealing with. And I think it's important that, as councillors, we have the opportunity to at least put forward issues of concern that we have. Now, we have, this council has been doing it, I think almost every one of us has done it, as a late item issue brought in, some late items to bring some matters forward. And I understand that that is difficult, and I understand that the actual procedure bylaw probably doesn't back up how we've done, because I understand that the late item is generally set up to be a late item introduced by the chair, as opposed to individual councillors. So I do see that the ability to input into the agenda is important. Now, obviously, if I want to raise an issue and no one else wants to, I understand it's not going to go forward. But there needs to be a mechanism in the procedures that allows a matter at least to be raised. And so the issue that is raised in the issue in terms of dealing with the agenda, the order of business, in terms of talking about how we can introduce. And I think it is important to be able to do that. So, and I note the paragraph saying, if council desires to amend the order of business to allow for the introduction of new business, I think it would be very useful to be able, for councillors, for there to be an item on the agenda, allowing councillors to bring forward an item that would then come forward to the next meeting. And then that would allow us to bring matters forward. I understand the present system creates some challenges, because if I introduce a late item at the beginning of the meeting, there's no material for it. Suddenly, you know, we're trying to create a motion out of nowhere. It doesn't necessarily provide the best governance, and I understand that. But if I could raise an issue at one council meeting to appear on the agenda two weeks later, assuming that people voted that that was an acceptable matter to come forward, at least for discussion, then it allows the background information to come forward. So it seems to me a good, healthy way for councillors to be able to bring matters forward and feel that they're able to move forward on an agenda item. So I think that's the opening that's suggested in there, and I'm quite pleased to see that, but that's what I'd like to see.
You're referring to the late business?
Yes, yes. Getting rid of late business items, because that's what this is proposing, and instead adding in the ability for us to have, for councillors, to be able to add an item for, and it just says a future meeting, but I would like it to be the next meeting. Otherwise, I could raise an issue, and it's going to go to a future item. It might not come back for six months, right? So it would be asked if it comes forward the next meeting, or if at that time it could be discussed as to when it should come forward. But I think that gives councillors some input. I mean, as mayor, you obviously have, you know, the agenda passes through you. But as a councillor, we don't have that ability. So I think that's important. So I think that, so that part of I'd like to see something, but I would like to see that it would come forward to the next meeting. And then it will come forward in an orderly way, and then we can bring issues forward and be less reactive, but also be able to move forward. So that's...
If I could just interrupt for a second, councillor, the corporate officer has a comment.
Oh, yes, please.
Yes, just for a point of information for council on that paragraph, talking about order of business when you introduce "new", the second sentence should read "the introduction of new business, not late business". Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I'm sorry. I already edited it in my mind. But no, yeah, but that introduction, and then, as I said, it could come forward in the next meeting. And again, if I have an issue that I want to have forward, and I can't convince everybody around the table that it should come forward, well, then it's not going to come forward. So I think that's quite that's quite helpful. I look forward to that. And then sorry. I think I'm fine right now. I've got a couple of other items, but I'll raise them on my, I think we'll do a second pass through like we did last time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Piper?
Thank you, your worship. No comment. Happy it was a report.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hooper?
Yes, thank you. A little bit confusing when on page nine, you've got voting. And you've got items H, I, J, K, L, M, and N. And underneath it, you've got removed provisions, H, I, J. What does it mean?
Does the corporate officer have a comment on this? Just checking it out.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm just going through here. I believe because it's really a rewording of the provisions, therefore, those other provisions become redundant. Really just streamlining the provisions, your worship?
So could we change that to actually highlight that it's not the removal of the provisions, it's the changing of these last three provisions? Because anyone reading this will take it that we're removing H, I, and J.
I think when and if council considers these suggestions and draft bylaw comes forward, they'll all be renumbered and will be reflect the appropriate wording in the provisions, so it's not so confusing.
Oh, so that'd be done at a later date?
Pardon me, sir?
So when the bylaw comes forward, this will be changed?
That's correct, your worship.
Thank you. And the last question I've got is on the delegations and and that. It says she'll allow up to 10 minutes for presentations. Or maybe extended by the mayor. Oh, sorry, I didn't read that bit. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Vidal?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to our corporate officer. Thank you for that clarification under agenda. It was a little confusing to me, but thank you so much. I just wanted to ensure when the report indicates public notice posting places that that will include our electronic board also?
Corporate officer?
Through you, your worship. Yes, that is correct. That would be all of the public bulletin boards, the electronic monitoring board, and any other, that's, that's, let me think now. That's all we have, I believe. Rhonda, is that correct?
And the two bulletin boards, you're referring to the post office and the village, correct, councillor?
Yes.
Yeah.
But can I, excuse me, your worship, can I just clarify something? The electronic monitoring board would not actually have room to post these kinds of notices, but it would actually have a notice directing it to the village website or the office. It's a very small board, but it will have a link to show that.
Thank you. I just think that, you know, it's a tool we can use also to direct people. Thank you. And just one other question. If you refer to my notes here. On the last page, under reports, the copy of the, I have a copy of the existing bylaw. And under item A, reports of activities as required by council shall be submitted through the chief administrative officer for inclusion on the next regular council agenda for the following areas. I'm just wondering if it would also be appropriate to add our CMP to that as we do get frequent updates from them?
Corporate officer?
Thank you, your worship. The report section is the departments of the village, not external edge agencies. That's what that provision is meant for. Any other correspondence or reports that would come from the external agencies would be at the direction of the CAO to include anything on the agenda?
Okay, thank you for that. No further questions, your worship. I do think that what the corporate officer has recommended with the introduction of a new council bylaw, there seems to be quite a few revisions and housekeeping that needs to be done. So thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Palmer?
Sorry. Thank you. A couple of more issues, just smaller, the ones that aren't necessarily covered. In 4A of the existing bylaw, it says, "Prior to each regular meeting, the corporate officer shall prepare an agenda of all business to be brought before the council at such meeting." That's good. It's always concerned me a little that that doesn't have a timeframe. And so I know that there's a real attempt to get it to us on Wednesday afternoon, sometimes Thursday morning. But it should have a timeframe, because in theory, you could deliver it to us, and I'm not saying anyone would. But again, when we're dealing with bylaws, we're creating rules for the future, it could in fact be delivered to me Monday morning. So it would be nice if there was a timeframe of when it would be delivered. I find it, I always, I want to read it, and if there's bylaw changes, I actually pull out the bylaws and I go through and figure out what the wording changes would be. And that takes time. And so if we had ample time, that would be good, as well as as well as sometimes agenda items generate interest in the community. So, you know, the earlier that goes out, then that discussion, good or bad, is out there, and it gives, it helps inform councillors as well. So I would like to see that, even if it's the same as now, and it says by noon on Wednesday or something. But there should be something, because right now there's no timeframe requirement on it. The second thing.
Corporate officer, she has a comment on that?
Yes, your worship. There is legislation that states that the agenda must be posted by a certain time. Is that what you're referring to? Yes.
So what is the legislation?
I believe that's one clear day for posting.
I'm sorry?
I have to check that, your worship. I don't have it, the legislation in front of me, but I believe it's. One clear day for posting. I can double check that for you.
So, again, so my point being that if it was just one clear day, that would be Friday. So it would be helpful to have it a couple of days earlier. So that's, that would be a topic to look at in terms of a change. Also, in the order of business at council, if it were possible, so that councillors' reports could be just submitted in writing, I think we've had that discussion before, and I think people were fine with that. And then the people can put whatever they want, and we don't all sit and listen to what everybody did over the last 12 days or didn't. So I just think that would, and that gives you the ability to put whatever you want. If a councillor wants to write for two pages, it can go in the package, or if they want to. So I would like to get that, because there's been meetings we've had where the first 30, 40 minutes are reports. We're getting better at that, but it does seem to me, sometimes I'm not clear of the relevance of certain items. So that would be a change, this, this might be the time to do that. And I, I don't think that should offend anybody, because they're, they're still able to communicate out what they want. So that would be my second thing. Now, my problem is I've always been so interested in this. If I start suggesting changes over and above this here, we could be here for a while. So maybe I'll just leave myself at that point. But those, those are two issues that I, I've always felt concerned about. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Before I hand it over to councillor, councillor Piper, I believe in regards to the reports that. There was a gentleman meeting back that said he would like us to elaborate a little bit more when we do our reports, so take that into consideration as well. But anyway, I'll leave that in abeyance at the moment, this, for discussion. So your suggestion is that councillors present a, to the staff, a written report of their, their reporting?
And that would have to be whatever our cutoff date for the agenda is, so it would have to be a day or two before that if we wanted that in. And you'll note that I didn't suggest that for the mayor's report.
Corporate officer, is that, is that something that we can incorporate there? No problem at all?
So currently, your worship, there is a requirement for any items, reports to be on the agenda. The Wednesday, we have a deadline of noon Wednesday. So that would have to apply to any material coming from council to be included in the agenda, because then they're prepared and ran.
And we have the CAO who has a comment on that? Grab the other one. Which one on the side? Just getting another mic to the CAO.
Thank you, your worship. Through you.
Excuse me, Madeline, it's not coming through. Yeah, let's go.
My apologies. Is this working better? Yep. My concern about receiving written reports from councillors, especially right at the agenda deadline of Wednesday at noon, is what is the expectation of staff with respect to editing these reports to keep them in. To keep them on. On portfolio, on point with respect to councillor portfolios? Because sometimes we struggle a bit with that when we're drafting the minutes. And when we draft the minutes, we try to include the reports that relate to councillor portfolios, so that the minutes aren't, you know, too anecdotal or long. Although sometimes councillors like to report on other things and community activities they have, which is not a problem from a staff point of view. But incorporating this amount of information into the agenda could be problematic. And I have to say, we spend a lot of time vetting and editing the staff reports before we put the agenda together. So I'm just, I'm wondering a bit if this might be somewhat of an awkward process.
Councillor Palmer, we're coming around to you, councillor. Because councillor Piper is after councillor Palmer. Let councillor Palmer have a quick comment on this one.
Well, I understand that. I think the expectation I would have is that they would just be included. They'd have to be provided a day or two earlier, so we don't create a deadline. And they would be included exactly as is. Because if the verbal report were given a council, it would be exactly as is. And, and then, yes, when the minutes are, of course, I would expect that the minutes would be dealt with as they are now in terms of filtering out relevance to portfolios. But it does seem to me if a councillor wants to put a list of a bunch of things, I, I wouldn't expect staff to edit that. So I would just expect it to go in as it is. That, that would certainly be a, I think that would be a way forward. If that becomes problematic, then I guess in the future that can be looked at and changed again. But I just think this would make our meetings flow better. I, I don't want to make our meeting shorter. I just want, when I'm here, I would prefer that we're discussing the issues before us rather than sitting for and listening to, to reports, to be quite honest. So that, so I think that would, that would work that way. Sorry.
Thank you.
Before I give it to the CAO, I think it's like the council agenda. It's not verbatim. We just put down the, the scope of what's been said, not the whole story. So that could become problematic with reports on paper if there are long. You know, you attended so many meetings and there's explanations on there, what do you cut out? I think that's where the CAO is coming from. Am I correct?
Yes, but I appreciate the clarification that the request is for simply to receive the reports as they're written and include them in the agenda, and provided there's no material that's problematic from a legal point of view. If that's the direction of council, that's what we will do.
Thank you. And now councillor Piper?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to staff. I just have a question, running off the point of councillor Palmer. Are there other municipalities that you're aware of that that's how they do their councillor reporting, is through paper only?
Councillor Palmer? Is that the staff council or the councillor Palmer?
It was, sorry if I misspoke. It was through you to staff.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any comments? CAO?
It has been tried in a municipality that I worked for in the past when I served as corporate officer and CAO dual roles. And it actually was a practice that was discontinued just because it was difficult for people to make the deadlines.
Thank you, staff. Yeah, my worry, I understand where councillor Palmer is coming from. I like to run efficient meetings and timely and whatnot. But I do worry for those. Future councillors that may not, a report writing may not be their forte. And so the discrepancies between those that enjoy that type of writing and those that do not may represent unnecessarily. So I do understand where you're coming from. I just, I think with time limits and the structure that's been put in place, I think that we could keep on track as is. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hooper?
For the past year, I've been putting in a written submission of my council report to the admin. And it's saying, I mean, we were told originally, like, just to report on that we attended these meetings, like we attended the library meeting, and we attended the Fraser Health meeting and that, and not to go into great depths or that on it. So I've been putting a written submission in with dates, times to be meeting, to staff. And all what the, all what the admin has done is taken, taken, or they put it under Fraser Health, the regional library, no report, and other things that are probably not on my portfolio listed at the bottom. Now, if people, if we just stick to, like, saying, we, we attended Fraser Health meeting. If residents want to know any further information about that, they could contact us. I mean, I understand where councillor Palmer's coming from. I mean, about four, five meetings ago, the councillors' reports and the mayor's reports went on for 30 minutes. People get bored with that. We've just got to say, we attended this meeting, this meeting, and if anybody wants to, any further information, come back to us. Or, and they can read, you should read what you've attended in the next council's agenda. And it's, say, with councillor Palmer's. If we just all put a written submission in with what meetings we attended, the dates, the times, and you could put other little notes in there, like if Brad Viz was at one of the meetings and the rest of it. It's there. It's, point is going on and on when you, people turn around and say, I attended this meeting and they spoke about this. People don't want to know that. If they want to know it, they will ask each individual councillor. So as far as I'm concerned, apologies, I couldn't put my written councillors' report in for last meeting, but I've got no internet at the moment, so I can't pass it on. I'll do it on Monday when I get an internet connection. But no, they go on too long. People get bored with them. So if we just stuck to, like, I attended the Fraser Health meeting on this date, I attended this on this date, finish. You don't need to elaborate what it is. You can put it all in a written submission, which the staff will put down. And if anyone wants any further information on it, they can contact each individual councillor. It will save so much time on that during the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Vidal?
Thank you, your worship. Been listening to the discussion on reports from councillors. I respectfully disagree with councillor Palmer. I think the ability at the, at an open meeting to update people who attend on our activities is important. And I'm just wondering if it would be possible or a good thing. At the end of our meetings, there is always an item on the agenda for comments or questions from the public relating to agenda items. I know in the past that it's usually the mayor or chair who answers those questions. But perhaps we could amend it that if. People who are attending wish to ask a councillor to elaborate on their report, that could be done if it was requested through the chair and directed to an individual councillor. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. I tend to agree with councillor Piper on this. I think, I, I'm just coming from the point of view that, you know, there'll be maybe some weeks or some days that you may have too much on your plate. You forget to put your report in on the, on the required date, and then you, you put it in on the Thursday, and obviously the staff are not going to say to a councillor, no, I'm sorry, I'm not going to put that in for you now. It's, I think it becomes a bit of a problematic for, for the staff to have these reports written. In regards to questions from the public, I think, again, it should be only questions pertaining to the agenda. And like councillor Hooper says, if we start to, start to elaborate more, that's more time taken on these things. So I think the important thing is that when council makes a report, that they stick strictly to their portfolios. Anything outside of that, which they do attend, I know, you know, I, I may attend a, a meeting with somebody in a coffee shop to discuss, I'll just say pay parking, whatever. That's got nothing to do with, with the actual portfolio. That's separate from that. All the public want to know is if it's, if it's, if it's healthy communities, or if it's, if it's the library tourism, or the, or, or the Fraser Health situation. That, that's the important issues. The other, the other parts, if you attend something, that's between yourself and your own private time. That's got nothing to do with council reports. I think this is where it got a little bit out of hand over the past two years, is other things popping into the reports. We don't need to be there. So I believe that that's one point that should be looked, looked at by the councillors themselves to monitor yourself and how you do that. But overall, and of course, when the public, when we do have questions from the public, there's nothing to stop a member of council putting their hand up, like I think would happen last council meeting, if they wish to ask that particular pub, public person to clarify or ask them a question. So that is there. That's already their councillor vital, so that, that's not lost. Oh, no, council has the opportunity to, if they wish, to ask a question of the individual or to ask him to clarify what they're on about, that's, that's no problem at all, providing everything goes through the chair. And obviously, if it's, if it's a, if it's, if the, it has to be something that's pertaining to the agenda. So that's, that's there. If that's the clarification, that helps you from that perspective. I, yeah, I'm, I think the way we're doing it, I think from my, from what I've heard in the past and over the years, whether it be one person or two people or three people who are out there in the audience, they've enjoyed listening to the councillors giving their reports. Some councillors have more than others, depending on the dates of your committee meetings. But they've, they've always indicated that, yes, like councillor Hooper says, over the years, it did get out of hand. It took an awful long time. As far as I'm concerned, as the mayor, with my attendance at many meetings, including the regional district, that mine, mine is a little bit longer, or the very short last, last, this week, is that there are a lot of important issues that come up at times in Fraser Valley Regional District, because that's an importance to all our residents, because we do, you know, a proportion of our taxes does go into the, into the regional district as well. So, yeah, I think it's, we should, I don't know. I'm of the opinion we should just carry on the way we are, but just, just like councillor Hooper says, just give one date from March 1st to March 31st, if that's the case, by 10, and boom, 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 those sort of meetings. And, and if. If the, if the public wants us to elaborate more than that, I suppose they could, they could call the individual councillor, if they wish so, to ask what, what transpired at those meetings. So that being said, I'll go around one more time. Councillor Palmer? Nothing? Thank you. Councillor Piper?
I'm fine. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Piper. Councillor Hooper? You're okay. Councillor Vidal?
Nothing further, your worship.
Thank you. This is just here for receipt, correct?
Actually, your worship, if council so chooses, I'd like.
Actually, your worship, if council so chooses, I'd like direction on moving forward with the recommended changes and incorporate it into a draft bylaw and bring that forward. I'm sorry, your worship. If council is, um, okay with all the recommended changes and revisions, uh, then I'd like a, a motion to, uh, accept and bring forward a draft bylaw, uh, to a future meeting.
The only, what did you write down in regards to the reports from councillors?
Uh, well, I got a general consensus that, uh, it stays status quo, is that correct?
All right. If it stays a status quo, just put your hands up, please. Yes, and, uh, as we're doing it now, reports from the floor. No. Yes, yes. Councillor Piper, you have a comment?
I, I, yes, sorry, your worship, I just couldn't hear what, um, it was either councillor Vidal or councillor Hooper speaking?
Yeah, councillor Hooper was just saying, uh, we'll carry on the way it is and just indicate our meeting dates without elaborating. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. So now, um, how are you going to do this?
Yes, your worship, I just require a mover to, uh, accept the, uh, recommended revisions and to bring, uh, forward a draft bylaw for council's consideration.
Okay, so we need a mover. Moved by councillor Hooper. So, I called a question. Councillor, do you have something to say? No, is any a mover at the committee as a whole?
Yes, I do. I'm going to vote against, because the motion is that we approve the changes that are there, and, and that doesn't include discussion about, um, you know, it just suggested as an option. So to me, it would be better that we just receive the report and with the consensus, have a new bylaw come back to us. Um, I would like, I'm going to just go repeat, I would like the, the, the section to be amended saying when we get a report. I mean, I, we understand now it has to be one clear day before a meeting. I'd like it to say Wednesday at noon, or Thursday morning at nine. I'd like to have some requirement, so, so I'm not happy with the changes that are proposed. I don't have a problem with those, but I'd like to see that, and I'd also like to see the issue of, of our order of business allowing us to raise, and I'm not clear that that's what that motion's going to do, so I'm going to go against it.
I believe the motion will include the late business, new business, sorry, and also including the, um, the, the time of day when you can pick up your reports, is that correct? No?
Uh, your worship, that is something that could be debated when the draft bylaw comes forward, um, for first reading, but at this point, it's not a recommendation of, of staff to change the delivery date from the current Friday, which meets legislation as we understand it, to a Wednesday, because that would push back the agenda deadlines for staff reports and input from outside agencies and that sort of thing, similarly by two days. So it would add considerable time to the, the considerable delay to the process, so it's, it, it's sort of trying to balance out to those two things. So the, the recommendation from staff does not include that at this time, but certainly that could come from the floor now, or when the draft bylaw comes forward.
So councillor Palmer, we, you still have a, we still have an opportunity when the draft bylaw comes forward for, for first reading?
Um, and with regard to how will we deal with the, the new, new business? Because it doesn't, it's not clear, it just suggests that as an option. Is that what the, the new bylaw will actually say?
Yes, uh, through you, your worship, councillor Palmer, that is the intention of adding the new business to give council, uh, the exact opportunity that, um, you were pointing out is lacking in the current structure of the agenda, so that, um, new business could be raised by any member of council at that time in the agenda, and then it would be referred back to staff to be brought forward at a future date, which could be discussed at that time, depending on the scope of the new business.
Does that help councillor Palmer? So everything you, you suggested is, is moving ahead, but it's, it'll be come back in a draft bylaw?
With the exception of a timeframe for the agenda.
Uh, well, that's as, as, as the chair has just said, that could be discussed at the draft, at the, at the first reading of draft bylaw?
Yes, your worship, and I apologize that we don't have the details about the legislated deadlines with us here today, but we'll certainly review that and try to tighten up, uh, that section so that, uh, there's more clarity.
Okay, councillor?
Yep.
Thank you. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Everybody in favor? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Thank you, your worship. We'll move on to the next report, that's from the chief administrative officer regarding the revitalization incentive bylaw.
CIO? No, it's not working. Hang out of microphones.
Thank you, thank you, your worship.
I'm going to offer my mic at my empty seat.
If, if, if you want to go over to councillor Piper's place, Madeline, you can.
I mean directly to your left.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I think the technology is now engaged. Uh, this report is about, um, the opportunity to, uh, develop a new revitalization incentive, tax incentive bylaw. Council had one that had been adopted in, uh, two thousand and thirteen, and it was never, uh, used, actually. It just, um, nobody ever applied for any of the incentives that were provided for in the bylaw that was enforced at that time, and so in two thousand and eighteen, it was repealed. It did come up that this should be considered again. Uh, I think it came up at a goals and objectives session of council. And so, um, it's been backburnered for quite some time, and I thought perhaps I could just bring it forward and get some direction from council as to whether or not they want to consider, um, implementing a revitalization tax exemption bylaw. This is a specific type of permissive exemption, and it's designed to encourage development, which, uh, supports council stated objectives, such as revitalization of a commercial area to promote sustainable tourism, or to and address unidentified need for rental or affordable housing within the village. There still are some undeveloped areas on the eastern end of the downtown area, for instance, and a revitalization bylaw in support of commercial development there could incentivize such development. In addition, uh, the village did receive a housing assessment in two thousand and nineteen, which identified a need for more rental housing and more affordable housing, and a revitalization bylaw could also be used to promote this type of development. I have, um, I've outlined here how the legislation works. Prior to adoption, the municipal council must provide public notice of the revitalization tax exempt, exemption program, and must include, for the public's consideration, the reason for the program, the objectives of the program, how the program intends to accomplish those objectives, and the types of properties, activities, or circumstances that will be eligible for the exemption. Also, the extent, amount, and maximum term, which can't exceed ten years of the exemption. Um, in the past, our, our bylaw, uh, that, that was repealed in two thousand and eighteen actually went the full ten-year period, but more typically, you'll see these bylaws have a three- or five-year horizon with a, a diminishing, um, amount of, of tax exemption over the, the scope of the three to five years. So I've just thrown some examples under the options, and I think I really should have labeled them as examples rather than options, because, um, I think it's unlikely that council will, um, settle on one of, uh, these examples that I've provided, but they're just, uh, put here to stimulate the thought process and get the discussion going, so that, um, council can provide staff with some direction as to whether or not you want us to roll up our sleeves and put the work in to start developing a program which would, um, end in a bylaw. So some of those examples are that, that you could, uh, implement a tax revitalization bylaw to promote commercial development, and I've, uh, used a value in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, for example, just to, because there has to be some sort of threshold that's defined, and you want it to be substantial. So you could have a revitalization bylaw for commercial properties in excess of, uh, where the improvements of development is in, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars on commercially zoned properties for the purpose of economic revitalization. Or, for instance, you could, uh, put in a bylaw to promote rental residential development or affordable residential development, um, and again, use a threshold of a hundred thousand dollars on appropriately zoned properties within the village. Um, or, uh, a council could, uh, take the approach of drafting, having draft, uh, a tax revitalization, revitalization bylaw to promote affordable residential development in excess of a hundred thousand dollars on appropriately zoned properties. These are the types of things, um, that, uh, that council could consider going forward with the program, or not at all. I just, uh, I've been asked to bring this forward for consideration. The alternative is to, is the status quo, which is not to implement a tax revitalization bylaw and let the market dictate, uh, what, how development moves forward within the village at this time. So the recommendation is simply that the report be received.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell. So it's here for receipts, I'll open it up for discussion, we'll start with councillor Piper.
Uh, thank you, worship, through you to staff, thank you for, um, pulling this off the backburnering and bringing it forward. It's interesting that, um, in its preexistence, um, there were no applications, and that could have spoken to, during that time period, um, the market. Um, I think at this time, um, I do have an interest, uh, for the rental, um, side, because I know locally, they're really, um, it hovers around zero percent for, um, rental properties, and it, and it breaks my heart a little bit when you hear of people desperately seeking, um, a home to, to, to live in. And of course, um, we welcome those people into our community, there's just, uh, not a great deal of homes, uh, um, or accommodations, uh, in the rental market, so, um, I, I do, I'm, I'm curious of, um, if the, if the current market, how long that's going to last. I know none of us have a, a crystal ball and, and can't see into the future, and COVID has definitely turned everything upside down on its head, so, um, I'm, I'm hovering on option number two, um, but I'm cautiously hovering on that. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hooper?
Excuse, excuse me, one moment, your worship, please. Could, uh, could I have a mover for the recommendation, please?
Sorry?
Can I have a mover for the recommendation, please?
Moved by councillor Palmer. Councillor Hooper?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, so the tax exemption program, you've not got a problem with it. The only thing is that when I've had these in the past, um, after the three-year period, I'll say, um, if it's rental property, the rents just tend to go straight the way up again. There is no way of actually controlling the rental market unless you've got an abundance of rental properties. Uh, you dealt with this back in the, in the UK where I come from. Uh, um, you can give them their tax exemption for the three, five, ten years, but as soon as that finishes, the rents go up, people get forced out. We had the recommend, uh, um, developer that took a big advantage of it. Uh, um, so really, on the tax exemption program, I'm not a favor of, because we've got no way of controlling it. So, uh, I'm afraid I can't support this recommendation at all. Thank you.
And councillor, councillor Vidal?
Thank you, your worship. I'm actually leaning towards, uh, option number two. It seems, um, when the housing needs assessment was done, it clearly indicated the need for, um, affordable or rental properties. Um, and in response to councillor Hooper's, uh, comment on not being able to control rents, um, I respectfully disagree with that. Um, as a former landlord, it's the BC Tenancy branch who regulates, um, rent increases throughout the province. Um, just one question, um, through you to staff, your worship, through to staff, um, it, would this bylaw be only for improvements or for new construction?
Uh, your worship, through you to councillor Vidal, the intent is, uh, for any improvement, so new construction included.
Thank you very much. Nothing further, your worship?
Thank you. And now councillor Palmer?
Thank you. Um, this type of program can be very useful. They're not always very useful, but they can be. Um, I've been involved with the Abbotsford Downtown Business Association, I'm the executive of that organization for probably twenty-some years, and I've been president of it for a lot of years, and some time ago, we negotiated with the city of Abbotsford a similar plan, uh, that anybody who did a renovation to their building of over a hundred thousand dollars would, on the amount that the extra tax that was created by that work, they would have an exemption, first year a hundred percent, second year eighty, it phased out over five years. It cost the city nothing, because otherwise that work would never have been done. And huge numbers of people took it up, and if any of you have driven in downtown Abbotsford, uh, in the last, uh, couple of years, and compared it to how it looked fifteen years ago, before we started that, you will know that it has a huge impact. Uh, so it's, it had been part of, not the only reason, but part of a huge renovation of downtown Abbotsford. So it can be effective. Now, it's a little different here, because we don't have a lot of older buildings that need to be renovated, we really need somebody, perhaps, if, if there's going to be more commercial space, it's going to probably be new construction on an empty lot. Uh, and I think that's going to be driven by the market one way or the other. I don't know that somebody's going to build a, a commercial building just for that reason, but, um, I, I'm not opposed to looking at that. I see it, um, more usefully for rental, because I think, um, you know, if somebody were to build a rental complex in town, a new building, I think it would be helpful, because I think we have a major rental problem, as I think has been acknowledged by most of us. Um, now, of course, that could be functioned, uh, in terms of how do you do it? Well, uh, it could be available to someone who was building a rental property that files a covenant, because it's now under the law, it's now possible, as of the last, oh, three or four years, that a municipality can require a developer to file a covenant, saying a building will only be for rental. So you don't build it for rental and switch it over five years later and sell the condos. So that part can provide security. And if we had criteria about being at least a bit below market on the rentals, I do understand councillor Hooper's concerns, uh, but again, I rent out apartments to people, and I know that this year I can't raise their rent. And even last year, I could only go up by two-point-five percent. So the concept of the rents flying up, uh, probably not such a concern. Again, that's, uh, subject to the whims of provincial legislation and who the provincial government is, I recognize, but rent has had some level of control for a while. So certainly during the period of time, the five years of the exemption, if we chose, we would know that rents would be below. But even if they weren't below, just the creation of those rental units would put stock into the market, which will have an effect on rents. Uh, as was pointed out, if there's no rentals available, the, the sky's the limit for what you can charge. So I, I think that that would actually be a useful way, uh, because I don't know that the market, the market will necessarily provide rental accommodation on its own quickly, because you can make so much more money in Harrison by building condos and selling at today's prices. I'm not too sure about next year's prices, uh, but I, I think that that may, um, that may be part of what we could do to encourage. And again, for people who are afraid of rentals, you know, we're talking about new construction, smaller units, so they're going to be, you know, they're still going to have some cost to them, that they're going to be occupied by, you know, staff and workers and people who are earning incomes and, and families and seniors. Uh, so I, I, I think that would be a really, uh, a good thing for the community. So, yeah, I do support that, I support it for the rental. I'm less supportive of, for commercial, but I think I would be supportive of commercial as well. Um, I'm just not sure it'll have the impact, but I know where it was used in downtown Abbotsford, it's had a, a phenomenal, uh, impact in terms of new construction and renovations. So, yes, so I'm, uh, I would be supportive, at least taking a look at those bylaws and, and being open to considering them and having the community take a look at them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, before I go around. Yes, before I go around one more time, like Counselor Piper says, the market change from a few years back has changed tremendously when we first had this bylaw in place. There was not, there was no construction going on at all in Harrison, so to speak. But I think now that market change is, is definitely on the up, on the up. And, and like you said about the, Counselor Vidal and yourself, Counselor Palmer said about the rental situation, there is a provincial tribunal now that takes care of these things so people don't gouge the renters. And I believe in our O C P, the, the corporate officer can correct me if I'm wrong, that there is something written there for new construction, I believe, for, for affordable housing as well, isn't it? Isn't there, I think? Or is it the zoning? I'm not sure. I think there's something in there as well in regards to that. I personally, I think there's an opportunity here, like Counselor Palmer stated, that there are certain lands and on the front street and beyond that are still open for commercial. My question to the administrator would be, why can't we put the three, the three options into the bylaw? Why does it just have to be down to one?
That's a very good point, your worship. There's absolutely nothing to stop us from putting a variety of options into a bylaw.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Carry on.
Thank you, your worship. I just might add, referring back to Mr. Costi's report, I note that goal eight of our current O C P is to provide for a mix of housing types for all ages and incomes. So your recollection was correct.
Thank you. I thought there was something there that I, that stuck in the old brain here. So that's what I, that's what I would like to see, that the three, the three options are put into a draft bylaw to rebook, to be brought back to council. And of course, it has to have some, some community input as well. I think that would be tremendously helpful to those who are coming in. And it doesn't have to be the 10-year situation or like Counselor Palmer says, you can break it down into percentages, I suppose, but that's another, that's another area to discuss. I'll go around one more time with Counselor Piper.
Thank you, Worship. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hooper.
Yeah, just one. I mean, to get rental accommodation within the village, we've got people that are now want coach houses in zone, on R1 areas. And we've got the O C P, which try to protect the R1 areas now. But we're going to suddenly get an influx of everybody wanting to put a coach house in at the back of their property. How would this work? To build anything now, $800,000 is, is nothing at all. So to put a, a coach house in the back of, say, where I used to live, would probably cost 200,000. How does a tax exemption work? Is it on that property or is it on the plot of land?
The C I O, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, your worship through you. Thank you for raising those very good points. It would, the tax exemption would apply to the improvements. So for instance, if we crafted the bylaw so that those type of coach housing developments were eligible for the incentive, which it's council's option to include those type of things or not, then it would be $100,000 of the cost of building, up to $100,000 of the cost of building the coach house. And I know that in a previous iteration of the bylaw, it applied to residential development with, without any criteria. It didn't have to be rental or anything else for residential development of four units or more. So there's different ways to craft it. If council doesn't want to encourage densification in residential areas, you would put some sort of threshold on the number of units. So it would have no impact on R1. I, I'm, I'm happy to take direction from council at this time or bring forward a first draft of a bylaw to include options for commercial redevelopment or development, rental, designated rental development, affordable and affordable development as, as was mentioned in the three options. But I'd just like the, I, I'm not going to include the options verbatim because I think we, I probably need to recraft it a bit with respect to thresholds.
Yeah, because I think nothing council wants is like sitting there rezoning R1, 15, 16 properties in R1 and going all through the procedures and that again. So yeah, if you could do that bylaw, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, your worship. I think that this may be a creative way to accommodate and meet the needs of our housing. Regarding the coach houses, I do think that this is probably something that can be addressed on the whole through the O C P revision, whether or not our residents and ultimately council, whether it's this council or a subsequent council, would like to see that. So I am much in favor of requesting our staff to draft a bylaw and to bring it back to council for review and, and final approval. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, it's in regards to the, when we, when we first did this bylaw, I believe it was basically for the commercial properties, I think, at one stage. And you have it there in front of you? Is that correct?
Yes, I, I do believe that the intention of that bylaw from 2013 was largely directed at commercial, but it also was promoting residential development of four units or more because I, I think maybe when it came in, there wasn't quite as much development in the downtown area. It also made reference to green development, but the, the definition of green development that was provided in that older bylaw is now pretty dated because it, it just, it simply required a, a lead certification, which I think people have diverged from somewhat. So that would be a very difficult concept to regulate. So I wouldn't suggest that we revisit that.
Yes, I wouldn't, I, I personally wouldn't be in favor of this revitalization for the coach house scenario. Now, the coach house scenario, as council or council knows, is under special planning area number two, anything north side of Echo is, because they're, they're the, the old and larger lots in, in Harrison. They, they were designated for coach houses and that was carried out not just by the A P C, but a special group of residents from that area. There was a special committee struck and they all were in favor of coach houses on those, at some future date that could accommodate the coach houses. So the reason that, I'm not against the coach house scenario if it's in the right area, but I don't think that the coach house scenario, unless it's for your own family, is probably a good thing to have for overall rental because again, you, we come up against the parking issues. We're in an area, a piece of land that's going to have above four units or whatever I think the C I O said, yet there would have to be, there were so many.
The, the bylaw that was repealed in 2018 made reference to development of four residential units or more, but that doesn't mean that this bylaw has to follow that same pattern. There may be further discussion at the council table about whether to incentivize rental housing in the zones that allow for it currently.
So yeah, that's just some thoughts here. And the Counselor Hooper.
Yeah, thank you. Just a thought coming to me. Would this tax exemption be included for someone that wanted to convert their property now into a second suite?
Yeah, this, this tax exemption bylaw wouldn't have any impact on zoning regulations. So if a property was eligible to have, if it was R2 and could legally incorporate a suite into the property, then it would be up to council whether or not they would want to incentivize that using this bylaw. So that comes down to the issue that you raised about whether or not this bylaw would apply to those coach houses or suites or anything like that, or whether, as the mayor suggested, it would only be on larger residential development. So that's, that remains outstanding.
Right. And just one last thing. This is just to receive this report, it's not for the bylaw or anything yet.
That, that's correct. This is just to receive the report and, and I'm, I believe the direction I'm getting from council is to come back either with a draft bylaw or another more detailed with more options.
Thank you.
Hey, Counselor. Counselor Palmer.
Thank you. Certainly this is, I look forward to seeing a bylaw. I think the devil's in the detail in terms of what it actually says. Certainly in terms of rental, I wouldn't be supportive of the, of the incentivization applying to R1 or R2. Again, I, I would not want it to apply to anything under four units. So I, I wouldn't want this to encourage a bunch newer, more coach houses in town. Not that, I'm not going to give an opinion on coach houses, but I, I, that's not my thought. My support would be that it provide, create some smaller, properly zoned rental properties. That would be my goal rather than suddenly create a whole new series of applications for coach, coach houses. So I have the, kind of the four unit minimum in my mind as well. But again, there's many issues, again, that, I mean, we've, we've talked about it in principle. Will it be over 10 years or five years? I think five years. Should it phase out over the five years? I think it should phase out. But I think it's important as well for residents to realize this is not, all we're doing is we would be foregoing resident, residential town, or not residential, foregoing property taxes that we would not have got anyway. So nobody's being given money. They're going to pay whatever they got paid before. They're going to pay last year's taxes anyway, but if their actions would have increased their taxes by a certain amount, that's what the, the savings would be on over that exemption period. So I don't, I wouldn't want this to be characterized as a tax giveaway for somebody builds an apartment. They're still going to pay tax on whatever the land they've got, whatever it was before. It's the increased value that they, that the incentivization works on. And that was, that was a really important concept again in downtown Abbotsford for people to understand, nobody's giving anybody anything. We're just delaying when you have to start paying taxes on the new stuff you've done. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, so do you need a, you, you got direction, C I O, on this? I think that we should come back as a draft bylaw and that the way, how shall I put this? I think with the comments from Counselor Vidal, Counselor Piper in regards to the rental situation as well, that I'm not sure how long this process would, would be before it's finalized, but it's, I think it's an important issue and I would like to see the finalization move along as, as, you know, as smoothly. I won't say quick, as smoothly as possible because it's, the rental is a very important issue that's been brought up this morning and also the opportunity for, for those who wish to invest in the community as well, because when they invest, there's a lot of money that they invest in the community. And, and also the, the, the village does benefit from this, especially new development through development cost charges as well, which is a big benefit to the village. So the C I O, you just had a comment?
Yes, your worship. I think it would be best for the record if you would entertain a motion to direct staff to draft a tax revitalization incentive bylaw than we have it on record when the direction was given.
Thank you. Do we have a mover? Moved by Counselor Vidal. I call the question, all in favor? Everybody in favor? Thank you. And thank you for bringing this back.
Your worship, before we start on the next agenda item, would it be possible just to take a short break?
I'm just going to do that.
Thank you.
We'll just have a short 15-minute recess, please. Thank you. At 10. Counselor Piper. Just wait for Sam. We are recording, eh? We're still waiting for Counselor Piper to come on. Oh, Counselor Piper's here. Can you have staff unmute me? Counselor Piper's asked for, to be unmuted. You're unmuted, Counselor Piper.
Thank you. I'm wondering if staff could also activate my video? Seems to be blocked.
Activate Counselor Piper's video, please.
Counselor Piper?
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, we'll reconvene this meeting at 11:05. And the next order of business, please.
Yes, your worship. We'll move on to the next report. This is from the Community Services Manager regarding the parking master plan.
Michelle?
Thank you, your worship. At the January 20th, 2021 Committee of the Hall meeting, council directed staff to include a parking master plan in the 2021 to 25 financial plan. So I've put together a list of deliverables that could be included in this plan, including strategies to manage on-street parking, seasonal considerations, review of existing accessible parking and opportunities, user-pay electric vehicle charging stations and technologies, and identification of short and long-term parking needs. The consultation process will include public events, at least one online survey and with our surveys, they are always printed off in paper as well and can be emailed or mailed to the residents. And if provincial health orders allow us to reopen the office, then they would be available then as well. The consultant would meet with village staff and stakeholders and the consultant will present both the draft and final reports to council. Up to $30,000 from the 2021 pay parking revenue has been budgeted in the 21 financial plan to be funded from the Parking Traffic Management Reserve account. Recommendation is that the draft scope of the parking master plan be approved. Thank you.
Counselor Piper has moved it. The discussion will start with Counselor Hooper.
Now, thank you. The one thing I see missing in this master plan is the boat launch. I mean, boats and trailers are parking all over the village. So I'd like to see something added regarding the boat launch and their parking. But I do see this as an opportunity to look at what I call probably managing the tourist. Now, you've got consideration for seasonal residence parking. I like that. But to identify the best suited streets for on-street parking restricted to one side, unless you're going to expel boats and trailers from that, it's going to be a best. Uh unless you're gonna expel boats and trailers from that, it's gonna be a mess. Um I'd like to see who's ever doing this, look at the prospect of uh buying some land, either them two plots near the boat launch, installing a small parking structure there. It's open, they they could do the temporary ones you can try out for a while. The amount of vehicles that would park there with the boat parking underneath, you'd get your money back within five years easy and after that, it's all profit. But uh no, the biggest problem I see is the boats and trailers. Um people don't really want to have their streets uh parking and are they gonna pay for the parking on the side street? So we're gonna mark out bays. Uh I did say this when with this first come to council, the last uh um uh with the previous council, that when you start doing a a parking, a pay parking, you should already include it at the start of the village and at the end of the village and work out what streets there and then should be residents only, parking times and the rest of it. Um unfortunately, that wasn't taken on board and this is why we're coming back to parking management plans and the rest of it. So uh no, I mean, are the uh streets uh best suited for on-street parking, they go bays marked out? Is this gonna be pay parking? What the hour's gonna be? Um what do we do when the uh we have the slash watch days with their trailers and their boats, the dragon boats and that? Uh no, I think there's a there's a lot of work to go into this. Uh and as for the the extension of the uh pay parking area, uh I did bring that up some time ago, that it should be extended right the way up to the old set the pub and that around that area. But again, it's gotta be time-related and pay parking. Uh and that's it for a minute unless we're gonna actually, because this way you can actually manage the tourists as well. You can keep them where you want in the downtown. I mean, with the boat launch last year, they were driving around for 20 minutes trying to find a place to park. You had the boats all queued up, you had the aggravation of the boat launch, because they had nowhere to park. We have to find them somewhere to park, but parking in side streets and the rest of it, especially end of Echo, because the uh the exit sign isn't visible from Spruce. So they go down Echo and they have to reverse all the way back. Uh is it a mess? I it might be worthwhile that council all get together and just walk some of these streets together and discuss what the best we can do. And the other problem is with the development on the St Alice. I mean, they've taken up now probably, what, nineteen bays? Are they gonna be charged a full amount for the suspension of them bays, which comes around about between thirty seven and forty three thousand dollars? Um now, I think there's quite a bit of work still to do on this and I'd like to see a further discussion within council on this one unless we can get it sorted out today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Just on one quick point, I'm not gonna get into the others because that's is that I believe that the the staff did give you an answer last time in regards to the St Alice, that the um the um the construction company have already have been spoken to about that? Am I correct?
Yes, your worship. Through you to councillor Hooper and the rest of council, yes, they will be compensating the village for taking for the the lost revenue of the paid parking. Thank you for raising it.
Thank you. And now councillor Piper.
Thank you, worship. And thank you to staff for um a good report and I'm excited to see this come back to the table and have some legs under it. The one item that I would like to see included is with the with the consultant is some cost estimations for those solutions that they determine for us. So cost estimations for items like signage or road markings or if they come up with infrastructure implementation, what those costs could be. So when that final report makes it through after all of the works of staff and the consultant and it's presented back to council, which I assume will happen, that we could also see that that cost estimate there and and I believe that will help the staff with future budget assignments and and whatnot. I I do have a question, if I may, your worship, for councillor Hooper and I was having difficulty hearing. I'm wondering his thoughts on the boat launch and the parking scheme that he mentioned?
Councillor Hooper?
Yes, on the boat launch parking, I mean, last year, boats and trailers had nowhere to to park. Once they'd launched, they were then stuck at the uh the boat launch.
Give me Ray, just if you tip your little mic, get there, you might be good.
They were stuck at the boat launch. No one else could actually launch or retrieve their boats because they were driving around the village trying to find somewhere to park for their boats and trailers. Now, if you said if we bought them two plots of land and built a parking structure on with an in and out for the boats, with boat trailers underneath, you would have a lot more room. Uh the paid parking is something I've done for the last, what, I've done for over 20 years and most of it. So I know about the consultation, the reviews and the implementation. Uh and unless you address these boats and trailers, they're gonna be the main problem because you you then got traffic queuing up all down Espinard, up uh Chehalis and that. It is, it's a nightmare. And of course, people get frustrated, they have a guy at the boat launch attendant, they have a guy at the bylaw officers. This is something that's probably the number one item we should be addressing today. Thank you.
Councillor Piper?
Thank you, worship, and thank you councillor Hooper for speaking to that again. I know that I have seen there's different technology apparatus available that control parking. So our parking availability and layout may or may not be suitable for that technology. So I would like to also see that the consultant consider that as part of their review as well and include that with, you know, ballpark or or cost estimate for us. So technology has come a long ways and that that may help with the looping that occurs with people trying to find sites and early advisement of this area is full, try this area, that sort of thing. But I'm happy to see this is back and excited to see the the report. Thank you, worship.
Councillor Vital?
Thank you, your worship. I think that all of council knows and our staff that this seems to be, that parking seems to be a a quite a substantial concern with our residents and also our our business community. And I'm very much looking forward to a consultant's report on some creative ideas to kind of address some of these. Uh and I also believe too that public input in this is so very important as we see our village continue to grow and an increase in tourists and also their usage. With that in mind, I just have a couple of questions to be directed towards staff and through you to Michelle, your worship. I noticed on the first bullet on your second page, you indicated identification of suitable areas for user pay electric vehicle charging stations to meet projected demands over a five-year period. Um and I'm I'm just wondering where that five-year timeframe came or if it would be feasible to look at maybe a five to 10-year period simply because it seems electrical vehicle usage is, the projection is that it's going to increase quite rapidly over the next 10 years? Thank you.
Michelle?
Yes, thank you, your worship, through you to councillor Vital, because technology does change so fast and these user pay stations rely on technology to send messages and receive payments and things like that, that we started out with five year, but we could definitely put five to 10 years and just see what the projections are out there in the industry.
Thank you. I would really appreciate that. And also, when we received our transportation master plan, it did indicate an encouragement for alternate transportation technologies. And and I'm just wondering if it would be worthwhile requesting the consultant to also work with that and to review our transportation master plan. Specifically, I know there are pilot projects now going in in a couple of communities for the motorized scooters. Can't quite remember the correct term of them and I think pilot projects for a couple of years are going through with that. So would it be possible to sort of like also just scope out the possibility of some emerging transportation technologies? Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Palmer?
Thank you. So yeah, I we've talked before about the necessity for this and so I'm I'm great with the scope. I think it's a I think it's fine. Obviously, at some point, when it comes back with the report, it'll be interesting because then it will be addressing some issues that will be somewhat controversial and I'm sure those issues will be discussed in fullness by council. I did want to address though an issue raised by councillor Hooper because I think it's actually a really good issue and I don't, it's one of those times, sometimes you see a problem and you think, I see the problem, but I don't know what the solution is. I do realize that the boat launch parking is a huge problem. You know, in the summer, I walk by it all the time because I try and get up early and walk and walk and and that whole area is jammed. And and the reason I see that as a problem, to be honest, is if you look at commercial development in the village, and we were talking about revitalization and reincentiv- incentivization a while ago, one of the logical areas is where there's a couple, there are some houses and then there's the empty lots. That stretch would seem to be a logical place for development, whether it's additional condos or one would hope some combination of commercial on the lower floor and condos. And yet I look at that and I think what I want to see, like if I were a builder, far from, would I want to build something there knowing that in the summer, when all the business is there, there's no traffic flow there because you've got a a vehicle with a trailer sitting in front of you every two minutes? So there's so little traffic there, that area ties up to all the nice days and the weekends when when commercial activity would be at its best. And 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 I don't have the answer. I don't know that a parking structure would be viable, to be honest. But I I I do see it as a problem. I see that as something that is going to have a a long-term negative impact on commercial development on that street. Many times I thought, I wish there was another place a boat launch could go, but I understand there aren't any logical places for a boat launch because that is certainly going to, that boat launch in that location and what it does to traffic on a weekend certainly is going to severely slow down any commercial development in that area, although of course, during frenzied times, anything is possible. So I did want to address that. I just don't know what the solution is. I I don't see another place where you could park. Those things take a lot of space, so even if you bought a couple of housing lots, you'd park four of them. My experience with uh costing out of parking structures, we've talked about that in downtown Abbotsford, those things are so expensive, it would be hard to receive, you know, get enough revenue in the three months. So anyway, I'll I'll leave the topic, but I just wanted to say, I I just see that as a problem. I don't know what the answer is, but I do say you've identified a major problem, councillor Hooper, in in terms of of parking and and traffic flow in the village. Thank you.
Thank you, C O. You have a comment?
Yes, further to to this issue, which is a very important one. I it has come up before and we were perhaps remiss in leaving out review where boat parking, boat trailer parking should be prohibited. It it really would be incorporated into that first bullet about recommendation of parking prohibitions and or restrictions. We'll make sure that we include boat trailer parking, that we point that out because as you say, can be very problematic on some of these residential streets. And also, as councillor Hooper pointed out, if you can manage the parking, you can manage the visitation somewhat. So we will look for strategies to communicate to the public when boat launch parking is full. So that's, I think that's something that that we've got to look at because we had such trouble last year and it is really all about the parking. It's a huge lake, it has endless capacity. The fact that it it can be slow to to launch or retrieve is just sort of one of those customer service things that people can decide whether or not they want to use that particular amenity. But the parking is problematic and I think the parking, if there's a throttle on the parking, which there is, we just need to look for better ways to communicate that to the public so that if you want to launch your boat on a busy day in Harrison, you better come early.
Thank you. Before I give you councillor Hooper, just I've got a few got a few comments to make here. Regarding the the boat launch, I mean, I've lived here more than any of you and it's it's always been a problem. The the operators have always had problems with certain people who are impatient or bad language and all this sort of stuff. That's been going on for years, nothing new about that. It's not nice, but that's so that continues because all people want to do is when they arrive here, they want to get on the water as quickly as possible. Last year was exceptional because of COVID. I'm assuming this year will be the same. The um the um the comments that just came from the C O, that's maybe one way of dealing with this situation, is to say that's it, we're we're full, no no more boats. But then you have residents who may decide they want to go out later in the day to launch their boats and if they maybe if the boat launch is closed and they can't get onto the boat, they can't get onto the water. So I'm not sure what that would work out and whether those who are coming from the islands for the day are gonna bring their boat up and put it. I think there's complications around. It's not easy. It's councillor Piper mentioned technology. I know in Colona and one area there, they have the stacking machines where you stack the 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 trailers. That's probably a very expensive situation, which quite sure, but I know that's that's how they they deal with the overflow of of the cars and and the trailers. It is a very big problem and people, it's it's not, it's been, it just seems that it's been the last maybe three or four years when people are really concerned about parking on the streets and parking here. But I I like the idea that, thank you councillor Piper, who brought the Good Neighbor Guide to us and how they deal with things in other municipalities. And of course, and and this one happens to be Abbotsford where they they, you know, they they manage with parking on the streets and and that sort of thing. I mean, the streets are village property, providing they don't they don't block your your driveway, it's there for people to park their cars. It's not, it's not an extension of your drive of your of your property line. And of course, your property line only goes up to the boulevard, where the boulevard is approximately 10 feet. So really, that that portion is is open as well. So and also, like councillor Palmer says, the expense, looking at the lots down to the east of 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 the Espinard, they're in the 1.5, 2.5 million. You're looking at approximately $4 million, approximately. You're looking at approximately $4 million, approximately to 6 million to build a parking arcade. It's got to be very wide because of the circle to get the cars up there, at least four stories. So I don't know what's, where the money would come from to try unless you had some developer who was interested in doing that. But of course, again, with, with Harrison, like all parts of Canada, it's seasonal. And when the season comes to an end, at the end of September, I mean, that parking would never be used to get any revenue. So all you're doing is paying, is paying for unused spaces. Again, this situation of parking in the village is seasonal. It's not the whole year round. We have a short season where the people come in and, and park their vehicles. And it can be, it can be dealt with. Espinard, as we know, we have the signage on both Hot Springs Road and Maple Street that says, no trailers or large vehicles to go down Espinard. Well, that'll have to be taken care by the bylaw officer because they do go down. We, and we use our, we lose a ballad or two every year on Maple Street. So that's something the bylaw officer would have to take care of because they're not supposed to go down the Espinard. It's all traffic boating and the signs there on the corner, the traffic lights. It's Lilwet and Chehalis. And that's where you go down. The other thing is that, where are we here? The other issue I want to mention is that, to me, these are two urgent issues that maybe can't wait for this, this consultation process. One is the parking on Pine. It is at a dangerous situation at the moment at the corner of Hot Springs Road and the entrance to the new, the new townhouses. Obviously, those who cannot park in their own, their own townhouse are now parking on the street. And it's dangerous. And when there is other people working on that street, they're parked opposite. So it becomes so narrow, it is really a dangerous situation. And personally, I think the whole of Pine should be a no parking area. It's one of the narrowest streets that we have. And I believe that we were discussing this a year ago that there were going to be no parking on that street, but then it was deferred to another meeting to discuss. But I think that's an urgent issue that has to be addressed. Because I have it on my camera on the car there that, um, I, grandfather with his child just came out from behind the car from the entrance to that townhouse. And if you're not driving slowly, it is absolutely dangerous there. And it's, it's a a major accident waiting to happen. So I think that should be addressed very quickly. And if we're moving forward, I assume it has to be done by this year. The, when the, um, when the, um, the company, whoever is going to take over, come to council to do the, the new, the new, um, pathway down McCoon's, that I think we should start educating the, the people now and bring in the, the lowest speed limit from Eagle to McPherson. I think that will start educating the people to slow down, get used to it. And then later on, we can decide what else we're going to do with the three-way stops or whatever down there. But I think those two issues, especially Pine and consideration for the speed limit should be, should be brought in. I will now hand it over. Who was it? Councillor, councillor Piper and then councillor Hooper.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you for raising the issue of Pine. I know you and I have chatted about that situation in the past. My last point is, I'm wondering if staff would consider with their consultant, public education tools as part of the strategy. Perhaps the consultant can develop those tools for staff to use in public education campaigns after the completion. I'm thinking specifically about like parking in cul-de-sacs, types of signage. So there's real clear information provided about parking and where it's prohibited and where it's permitted. Mapping, that sort of great tools that could be used in public ed. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you. Councillor Hooper.
Thank you. Just a couple of points. On the boat launch parking, you could actually put open still structure in on the boat launch parking area itself. This would have a double effect is that you could have boats drive up and come around, boats park underneath. Also, it will provide some protection for the ice rink which fit underneath during the winter months. On the parking on the, um, side streets with the driveways, what sort of sightlines we're going to be putting in? Because obviously the sightline, if you're coming out and turning right, depending what side of the street you're on, would be na, would be narrower than the sightline on the left where you've got the truck. So you're going to lose quite a bit of parking there. On the issue of Pine, I've said this to the, to the CTQ. Pine should be one way in, order one way out. It would solve all the problems. It would also allow for a cycle lane to go in. As for McCoon's, again, if you want to stop traffic going up and down McCoon's, you do McCoon's Insection. You could portion off the east side lane and just have the one lane going up. And that we've done, uh, one way and it'd be, you could stop, you'd have to come out of Pine or come out of order. Come down another way, it, it's opposite directions. It would, cars wouldn't be allowed to shoot up and down because each different section will be one way. And this is what I've said to CTQ on a number of occasions. And that's, it's something I've done, I say, I've done all my life to, to, to deal with traffic problems like this. And it's the easiest situation. It saves on money. You wouldn't need to put the, uh, the sidewalk in on McCoon's. We should have that east side lane be there. It's, it's a simple solution, but unfortunately, nobody's paid attention. Thank you.
Thank you. In regards to the sidewalk, councillor, as you very well know, we've applied for a grant and that's, uh, that's what we applied for. Anybody else wishes to make any more comments on this before we move on? Do you need any more? It's just a receipt or was it a recommendation? Oh, no, it was a recommendation. Okay, no, no more comments on this. You're all okay for now. I think staff has got plenty to work on there. Or the consultant, well, I should say, sorry. But I would, um, in regards to what councillor Hooper says regarding sightlines, that's a a very good point that came up on that Good Neighbourhood Guide in regards to one of the very important areas is the crosswalks where they, um, they should be set back any car. I think it's six meters, it shows here, because I've noticed the one on Lilwet there by the Cascades. If you're standing behind the truck or a car that's right up by the side, where you cannot see the people there. So I think that's a hope the consultant will take into account some of these areas. And there's councillor Piper with a hand up.
Thank you, Worship. Just a really quick point. I think we could address those sightlines within our highway and traffic bylaw at some point as well, if, um, if staff would consider that.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, the CEO, you have a comment?
Yes, we can certainly review our traffic bylaw. There are setbacks for sightlines from corners with respect to vegetation and parking and that sort of thing. So we could certainly review that again in future and make sure we incorporate sidewalk, uh, crosswalks.
Thank you. So nothing, no more discussion. I'll call the question or in favor of the recommendation? Thank you. That's passed. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Yes, your worship will move on to the next report. That's from the Chief Administrative Officer. This is regarding the urban forest master plan.
Mr. Gold?
Yes, your worship through you to the rest of council. As council may recall, work on this project was deferred in 2020. It was one of the projects that was put on hold due to the uncertainties around COVID-19. I think there was a report received around June with respect to that. So it's back on the table now. It came up for discussion again in December when council was considering the tree replacement on public lands policy. So at that time, staff committed to bringing back a scope for the urban forest master plan for council's consideration and review. So that's what you have in front of you now. Basically, the scope would include a review of all policies, bylaws and documents related to the management of trees and forested areas within the village. And also an inventory and condition report of trees of significance on public lands within the village. And a list of recommended replacement trees based on aesthetics, hardiness, longevity, the size at maturity, the compatibility with infrastructure, both overhead infrastructure and underground infrastructure, the contribution to the natural environment and adherence to fire, fire smart principles. We'd also like to include in the scope a recommended set of standards for landscaping plans to form the basis of a landscaping plan policy to guide future development within the village, which would include a methodology for calculating a minimum number of replacement trees on any given lot and a list of approved tree species for use in the plan. The draft scope in front of you also is suggesting at least two opportunities for public input on the draft plan, including at least one online or in-person open house with the preference being for in-person, but we have to work around COVID constrictions, of course. And ultimately, a presentation to council of a draft plan for the purpose of incorporating feedback and then a final presentation to council of the completed plan. There is up to $75,000 in funding available for this, which was included in the 2021 budget. And it's going to be funded from gas tax reserves. That was previously approved. So the recommendation in front of you is that the report regarding the scope of the urban forest master plan be received.
And we have a recommendation? Do we have a mover? Councillor Piper? And councillor Piper, you're on.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you to staff again. Great job. Happy, happy, happy to see this come back. I'm wondering, within that inventory work that will be included in the report, will that also include anticipated available space for future plantings? And to go along with that, a recommendation on types of plant inventories that should go in or replacement of those significant trees? I'm just thinking for the long-term health of a tree and how those should be distributed throughout, throughout the community that go hand in hand with maintenance and protection of, of the tree itself.
Yes, your worship through you to councillor Piper, that, that would be a good inclusion in, in the scope. A list unidentified, a list of identified areas for new plantings. And with each identified area, a, a list of those trees, which would be suitable for the spot. That's, that's a good point because some, some trees would be better in some places than other places.
Councillor Piper?
Thank you. Great. I appreciate that. And I'm wondering with the consultation with residents, will that include what residents would like to see, how they're viewing livability in the community? That sort of engagement or has that been thought through completely yet? Sorry, your worship through you to staff.
Yes, thank you, your worship, through you to councillor Piper and the rest of council. No, we would be interested in, in seeing what the proponents bring forward in terms of what they suggest with respect to public input. But public input does mean public input. So I think the public would be welcome to bring any of their ideas forward. But at this point, we're just scoping the proposal call.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I have, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Piper. Now we have councillor Palmer.
Thank you. The, I'm supportive of going ahead with this, obviously. So simply I support moving ahead with the master plan. The, obviously, we live in a community where people are very concerned about the environment, very concerned to see trees go, particularly on other people's property. So I think it's, I think it's important that we, uh, I think the bylaw part is very important, not just you, you, that, that part of creating some rules that, you know, if somebody's building a house, I know they have to cut down trees. But there should be some requirements if they replace the trees. It's not going to have the same impact this year. But 25, 30 years from now, it, it will because you can certainly see what the, the significant development that's happened in Harrison in the last four or five years, which is largely market driven. There's, uh, obviously the urban forest has taken a real hit. And so I think it's really important that we look at a requiring replacement of some level of significant trees. I think it also goes to the issue when we look at development as well, because sometimes we have an application where the property has the maximum number of small lots, sometimes even with, with a desire for a panhandle to make, you know, to maximize the use of the land. And I recognize that every time we make the maximum amount of lots you create, it guarantees that all the trees will be removed and probably not leave areas for the trees because some of the houses are so jammed together as well. So I think we have to take a look at that as well. I would love to see if, as Harrison grows and older houses get replaced with new, there's always going to be all sorts of conflicts from that because of new houses being higher than older houses. But, but certainly knowing that we've got a, a, a plan in place that requires replacement with trees so that Harrison will look perhaps more treed in 30 years than it looks at this exact moment, I think is important. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to some well-thought-out bylaw and development requirements with regard to trees and, and new property. As well as, as I think councillor Piper asked about where trees could go, because I'd like to see us have a, a, a conscious plan to plant, uh, to plant more trees. We're surrounded by trees in the mountains. I recognize that. But I think in the village, I think a very large part of the identity for people who are here is that we live in this very natural treed environment. And I think people are disturbed to see it slowly diminish. So I think we need to take some steps to re-tree it to some extent, recognizing the limitations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Vital.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to our staff. First of all, I want to say that I certainly share councillor Piper's happy, happy. And I'm glad to see that we're moving from what had appeared to me to be a reactive measure with trees and moving towards a more proactive approach to tree management. I, I just have one, one question for staff. And I'm, I, I believe that you did include it in, in the scope, but just want a little bit of clarification. On public lands, it is the responsibility for maintaining for maintenance and, you know, possible removal of trees which fail. That does have the potential of causing property damage or injury to persons. So I just want to clarify or ask, included in, in the scope of this plan, it is, will there be a, you know, a, a method to kind of reduce the severity and cost of maintenance through, you know, really effective management, planning and design of tree placement?
Mr. Gold?
Yes, a very, very good point. That is the intention behind the request for a list of recommended replacement trees, which includes such things as mature size, longevity and infrastructure compatibility, hardiness, those sorts of things. So what we're hoping is that we'll get a really informed plan that will help us nurture trees that, that are long-lived and can be very healthy in the envi, in the urban environment.
Yes, thank you for that. Thanks for the clarification. Nothing further, your worship?
Thank you councillor. Yeah. Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I'm, I'm quite happy with, with happy, happy. And move forward on this. As we all appreciate, we all love trees. It's part of, it's part of what we breathe. We need them to breathe. But with development, you lose trees. When I first came here, the, what we used to call the Wasps subdivision, where most of us live, is, it used to be a beautiful forest, total forest when it was only 400 people here. But they all came down to build homes. But that subdivision, as I still called it, the Wasps subdivision. If you walk around and look around, there are many trees that were planted by the residents over the years. They've grown to beautiful trees. Also, our, our development side had put in boulevards with many trees as well, which obviously beautifies both the entrance to Harrison and the back street as well. So they, they're, they're required to put in so many trees as well. From Counselor Palmer's perspective, yes, maybe there should be more trees sort of into the subdivision itself, I suppose, to, you know, to do that. But like I said, with the smaller subdivisions, I haven't noticed it that much, except for the boulevards that were put in. Whereas the big subdivision I'm referring to, because we've got the large streets and, and all that, the, the, the original subdivision that a lot of people managed to plant trees and they have many trees there. But no, it's a, it's a good plan. That's, we're glad that it's come forward today for discussion. And the only thing I, what did I have here? Mythology, most given is in the plan. So the only, the only, I'm not sure, this is more of a planning, so maybe it's not the right area, not the right meeting to bring it in. But I'll just throw it in there just for, not for really discussion, but I think that when a, when a lot is, is cleared, that we should have some indication. I think, I think there should be some indication prior to the lot being cleared of, of trees. When the, when the development would, would actually start instead of just being left as an empty lot. But that's probably a discussion for the, for the planning side of the, the village. It's just something I throw out there. Counselor Piper?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to staff and more, just a, a comment. And I know that we're just dealing with the, the scope of the, of the plan. But I'm wondering if I could plant the seed, the seedling, if I may, for after the project. If there could be a public education portal on, on our website that would direct homeowners or property owners to local experts or how to care and nurture their own trees on their own property. I think that information or that go-to may assist in the canopy for the entire village. So I would just like to plant that seedling, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hoover.
Yes, thank you. You've got presentation to the council on the draft proposal. Can that be with the public as well? Will the public see the draft proposal rather than just council?
Your worship through you to
Yes, please.
Counselor Hoover and the rest of council. Yes, absolutely. That would be at an open meeting. And there would be, also the public would have opportunity for input before that draft was even put together.
Right. And on number three, it's got a recommendation for the set standard of landscaping plans within the the village. Will this take into account crossing points? I mean, we got down Espinard, a lot of the young kids. When you see the planting down there by the crossing point, you can't see the children. Some of the landscaping has grown up that high. So your vision, when you're driving down Espinard, is you don't see some of the young children or even people with dogs on the leash. You don't see the dog. So will, can that be taken into account on the actual crossing points?
Not quite sure. I don't, I don't quite understand that one, but the CEO, he have a comment?
Oh, yes. Thank, thank you for raising that. That speaks to the point that Counselor Piper was making earlier. That is really a matter for the traffic management plan, because our, our plan, our bylaw. We do have a sightline regulations in other bylaws that address vegetation size and, and that sort of thing. So those perhaps need to be reviewed and make sure that we're following them properly. But the, this particular scope wouldn't address that. It's really about trees.
Yeah, right. And the inventory, would that include the trails for the trees?
And I'm not sure if I put the language in this report, but the, our, the language that we would use would be individual trees and forested areas. So where a trail goes through a forested area, we'd ask them to inventory that as a group of trees rather than tree by tree by tree.
Right. So you're doing an inventory of them. It says an inventory and condition reports of the, the trees. Because I've been on site when a tree branch has come down on top of a car and the people have burnt to death in that car. I consider the screams now. So I'd like to make sure that when they do a full inventory, they take into account any damaged branches and the rest of it. And also, you've got a GIS system. Will you be putting any trees on the GIS system to review back later on?
GIS system? Did you, sorry, could you clarify that question?
Yeah, you've got a GIS system.
GI system.
Yeah. Will you be placing the trees on the GIS system?
Oh, the GIS system? Eventually, that would be a nice layer to have when we develop the GIS system. That's, yeah, an excellent idea.
Right. Yeah. But if you're doing that, I've gotten, I've got no problems with the $75,000 as long as they go on the GIS, GIS system.
For clarification, this project would not include developing a GIS layer for trees. The GIS system's still under development.
That's, that's something that we've done later on.
Yeah.
But as long as they're identified and the locations are identified.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it can go automatically on the GIS system. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Just like to, clarification here to the CAO that this is more of a liability issue. I, I, I'm assuming we can't be responsible for the, if a branch is blown by, by the wind. That's very healthy and ends up on top of a car or a person, can we?
Well, unfortunately not. But that is, that's a situation that we really want to avoid, of course. But if, if a hazard is unknown or develops during the course of a storm and there's where, where sometimes that's unavoidable. I mean, that's life with trees sometimes. But we really do want to get a condition assessment on our significant trees to make sure that especially the larger ones are healthy and, and from a public safety point of view.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, obviously. Yeah, that's, that's a very good point. Thank you. Any further discussion on the, on the urban forest master plan? We've had a mover. Call the quest, all in favor? Everybody in favors passed. Thank you. Next order of business.
Yes, your worship. We'll move on to the next report. This is from the Community Services Manager regarding website redevelopment.
Michelle?
Thank you, your worship. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we've seen an increase in web traffic and reliance on our e-services. And at the December 7, 2020 regular council meeting, council approved the use of COVID-19 Safe Restart Grant Funds for technical, technological upgrades, and that included the redesign of the village website. So the RFP, in the RFP, the consultant must review and evaluate the current website, website address, appearance, and deliver a style guide so that we'd be able to maintain this long-term. Make recommendations on a platform and provide full migration services, training and ongoing support. The architecture and design must at minimum be user-friendly, visually appealing, compatible with mobile devices and all common browsers. Have a comprehensive search function, translation service, document storage and homepage announcement banner. News feeds with subscription service, fillable forms that are trackable, meet web content accessibility guidelines. Be able to be integrated with all current e-government services and, and expansions that are planned in our immediate future. And be compliant with privacy standards. The consultant during their consultation process must hold at least two public events. At least one survey, meet with village staff and other stakeholders and present both the draft and final design to council. The financial implications are that this has been budgeted for up to $20,000 in the 21 financial plan to be funded from the COVID-19 restart grant. And the recommendation is that the draft scope of the website redesign be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And we have a recommendation. We have a mover. Moved by Counselor Vidal. And now discussion will start with Counselor Hoover.
Yeah, thank you. Page 18, you've got the integration of all current e-government services. And you've got the GIS mapping and video coming down. Would that also include any EDM, that's electronic measuring devices, so you can actually put stuff onto the GIS and onto AutoCAD?
Michelle?
No, this actually doesn't include anything with the GIS system, only that the website would be compatible with it.
It says GIS mapping, so you got, I'm confusing that one. Yeah, as long as it's computer, user-friendly, I've got no problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. By Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, your worship. This is my happy, happy. I have long advocated to have an update of our, our website. And I certainly understand the restrictions and the need to postpone it because of COVID. But I do want to thank staff for bringing this forward again. Very much in support of this recommendation for a couple of reasons. The main one is that I have heard from many, many residents that our current website is very cumbersome and needing to go through multiple, multiple, multiple layers in order to be, to locate what it is. And that certainly no, no reflection on staff at all. It's just, I think, time to redo it, redesign it and, and upgrade it. Just one question, your worship, through you to Michelle on page 17. Under your bullet and consultants. I think it's bullet number five. Recommendation and rationale for an open source content management system. Although I'm, I'm not computer development or website development knowledgeable. What, what can I, I can assume is a CMS is so that certain appointed staff would be able to change or modify content rather than having to, to outsource that? Is that correct? Michelle?
The CMS is actually the platform that it, that the website is built on. And so we said open source so that we wouldn't be committed to proprietary software. The content management system typically does come with multiple users on the backend. And that's what we're, we're working towards is that we'd be able to manage the information ourselves. So that's partly with the style guide and then partly in the, in the architecture and design. It says to include at least one administrator with the capability for additional internal users.
Thank you. And one further question to Michelle is, under the financial obligations, that $20,000 to be funded from the COVID restart grant. Would that include or can you anticipate any sort of like ongoing maintenance costs of the new website?
In the financial plan, we have, I think it's 4,000 or 5,000 set aside every year to go into the fund to maintain our website and to redevelop when necessary.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. No, nothing further, your worship?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Palmer?
I pretend no expertise in our website. I do find our existing website sometimes, I go on our website quite often to pull off bylaws and minutes. And I don't always find it works very well for me, but I've always blamed myself because I'm generally inept at computer issues. But, but if it made it easier, it might help because that's, that's where I find simply it's sometimes very difficult to find, maybe look for a bylaw from 10 years ago and it doesn't always just pop up. So if it's a more efficient way, it'll help even people like me who are almost hopeless on computers, then I'll be thankful. It'll be well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Piper?
Thank you, worship. Just a couple comments. I'm looking forward to having an intuitive website. And I'm, I'm sure that that will increase readership and the navigation of the site overall. The revamping of the website for me began last, last council as well. So I think coming to fruition through the, sorry, not to diminish, I know Counselor Vidal's been a champion for this. I just think that the gift through the COVID-19 restart grant has, is one of those silver linings that we're experiencing once again in such a terrible, troubling time. I'm, I'm just hoping that the platform will also have the ability to host interactive maps. Kind of my thoughts are going towards the EV charging maps that are available. Not designed by us, of course, but external, external agencies. So as our EV charging stations grow, that may be useful to also have included. I'm just hoping that that type of mapping would be possible on the website. Thank you to staff for a great report and good work so far. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, it's, I think, a liking report. Thank you. And as we all appreciate, we only have one communication person as such. Michelle here is doing a great job. We do not have a department of, of these people to, to deal with all these things. And I think to make it as easy as possible for folks. I would admit like Counselor Palmer, that all I need is that link on there so I can press it to get on my Zoom meetings. That's all I really want. You know, and I do remember to put the video on and unmute and mute myself. So I've, I've got to learn. That, that I've accomplished. I'm really happy with myself. But for those computer whizzes out there, she's done a fabulous job and again, make it as, as easy as possible for the residents. I mean, there are a lot of seniors out there and now getting on to the computer systems. And for them, I think if we can make it simple, you know, for them to get through for whatever the reason may be on our website for, for information, it's all on there. We keep telling folks, everything you need is on the website. But I'll leave it to the capable hands of Michelle and the staff to, to put this in place. And is there any other questions from council on the website? No? So we had a mover. So on the recommendation, all in favor? Everybody in favor? Motion is passed? And is that it?
Move for endorsement, your worship?
Before, before I adjourn, I would just like to thank the staff. This has been a lot of work here. I can see getting all these reports together and getting the background information. And several things that our counselors have asked to be brought forward have been brought forward today. And, but what I have heard from the counselors, they're very happy with the reports that have come forward. And now we have consultants to take care of some of them. A lot of extra work for the staff to move forward with and bring back to council. But it's, I want to thank the counselors for a really excellent meeting. A lot of good inputs coming into this this morning. And of course, to the staff for putting And of course, to the staff for putting everything together for us. And I would just like to welcome back our, our receptionist, Jacqueline. She's back on board with us, and it's nice to have her back on board. And other than that, motion to adjourn, Counselor Palmer's, well, that's all I need, a mover. Counselor Palmer, all in favor? Thank you, everybody. Thanks again. Stay safe.